Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco's workshop meeting this July 8th, 2024. The council thanks you for being a part of your city's government at workshop meetings. The council discusses issue, but no formal action is taken. Under our new rules, we do have an opportunity for up to eight minutes of public comment per item, which will fall under section five. These are items for discussion. That allows for two, two-minute comments per side, so either two pro and two con. Obviously, those aren't mandatory, but that is the opportunity for the public to engage during the workshop session. So again, I'll remind you of that at section five. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-dashwa.gov/agenda. For those in attendance, it's that small table immediately to your right as you walk in, to my right, looking at it. The meeting is being televised live on PSE TV, channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and in Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and GoToWebinar. I believe this week we do have Facebook up and running again. Is that okay? I'm seeing nods from council. I know we had some intermittent issues there. This and previous council meetings, our video is available on the city's website as well. So lastly, the public may submit lengthy comments or ask questions by contact the city manager, city clerk, or via the Ask Pasco app. With that, let's roll on to the roll call.
Councilmember Barajas.
Present.
Blaisdale.
Here.
Grim.
Here.
Harpster's excused, Peralis.
Here.
Milney.
Here.
Serrano.
Present.
Six. Councilmembers present.
Thank you. And with that, if you all please stand with me and engage in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So with that, we're going to move on to item number four, which is verbal reports from council members. Councilmember Barajas, not Harpster.
That was the first one. Surprised myself too. So just wanted to share over the weekend, company of you, mayor, to the Freemasons. This is the eighth year that Freemasons comes to the city of Pasco, and they come from all over the world. Met some people from Europe, Cambodia, obviously all over the state of Washington, California, other states. The Freemasons have been around for 121 years. And again, for the past eight years, they've been participating here in Pasco. They will be moving it back to the west side for the next year. I was invited, since I was there last year, to read the proclamation. I guess they didn't get the memo that there was a change in mayor, so I was invited anyway. But thank you, mayor, for attending and reading the proclamation for their 121st years. Also, the parade, wanted to give a shout out to Director of Fund and staff for a very well-organized parade, and shout out to everyone that was tossing the little icy pops. It was a hot day. I think we were all already tired by the time we were getting to the end of the parade there. It was hot, so I hope nobody got sick, no heat strokes out there. But again, just another great event for the 4th of July. Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Milney.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, also another kudos to staff on the parade. It was really good. How do you like the new direction the parade has gone for the last couple of years? It's very good, very well organized, definitely a lot of candy thrown out. So I'm sure it was, thank you guys for cleaning up the streets on that one. Then I also did the car show, which was right after the parade. And Councilwoman Blaisdale and myself, we judged cars and had a good time checking out all the cars. So I appreciate giving us the opportunity to do that. And then on 4th of July, I did do a police ride-along with Sergeant Romero. And I will say, I was hoping for like, trying to catch people shooting off illegal fireworks, but it was extremely difficult because there was like a lot of police business. When you have people have a day off, you have drinking, you have them having a good time. There's a lot of other stuff that goes along with that. So between people firing off their own guns in their yard, to domestic violence, all that kind of stuff. We seem to always be waylaid in the paperwork. It just seemed like everything was taking so long. But, and don't hold me to this, but I think there was 14 police cars out. There was a lot of cop cars out, but it just seems like these other incidents take a lot away for us being able to go to where people were shooting off illegal fireworks. So hats off to Pasco Police trying their best, but duty does call when you get people shooting off weapons, and that's the priority. But I will say, we, the Pasco Police force out there in force, and we were trying our best. And so it was quite the evening. We were out till two, trying to catch people. But yeah, that was my report, and just proud to be part of Pasco and proud that we had a good 4th of July parade and that we're trying our best to clamp down on illegal fireworks. But it is a challenge, and especially when you compare to West Richland, that was really war zone. But I will say, hopefully, we can get it more into control as years go on. So thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, I too would like to echo my thank you for the most worshipful prince. Sorry, I had the name. Prince, the most worshipful Grand Mason Lodge, who are attending here in Tri-Cities from the west side, from across the world. And thank you for selecting our city and allowing Ms. Barajas and I to be part of that. I also, at the evening, got to participate in the fireworks, got to give like the opening speech, if you will. We had a great singer for the National Anthem. There were some hiccups in it, but I thought it was a great time. You know, I appreciate staff working through all the bugs. I know it's always stressful, especially when, you know, you've got America's birthday you're celebrating and you get a delay in there, but you guys did great. I appreciate you catching up on that. It was pretty awesome launching stress balls out of the T-shirt cannon, which I think is going to be, going to be adopted for many, many future events, hopefully. So seeing no further lights, we can move on to item number five. Again, this is our items for discussion with opportunity for public comment. As I expressed earlier, there will be a total of eight minutes allowed, allowing two comments of two minutes, pro or con, for the two following items, and we'll take them in turn. Obviously, no one is required to speak on these. It's just, we used to not have public comments. See a couple of new faces in the audience, so I want to kind of walk through that real quick. So with that, we're going to move to item 5A, which is ordinance amending sections of the Pasco Municipal Code to Title 17 Sign Code related to billboards. And this is going to come from, I believe, Director Gonzalez is listed.
Good evening, mayor and members of council. As we get the presentation up. The city of Pasco regulates the sign code via Title 17 in the Pasco Municipal Code. In 2006, there was a fairly substantial update. At that time, city council adopted ordinance number 3790. And in that ordinance, there was the inclusion, which prohibited the replacement, substantial repair, and construction of new billboards. Outside of this change, the sign code has remained relatively the same outside of an amendment late last year, which took murals and public art out of the sign code and created a new chapter in the municipal code. At the February 5th, 2004 council meeting, council was approached by a representative of Meadow Outdoor Advertising regarding a proposed code amendment to allow for billboards, including digital billboards, back in the city of Pasco. This slide shows the map of all existing billboards within Pasco city limits. You can see those little call-out icons. The areas shaded in yellow are the areas that the proposed billboard amendment would allow for billboards to be permitted. And the areas shaded in that blue crosshash, which generally are covered by the Broadmore Overlay District in northwest Pasco, are areas where the billboard proposal would be prohibited under the proposed amendment. So the proposal would revise the definition of billboard itself and add a definition for digital billboards to the Pasco Municipal Code. This would be added to Section 1710010. The key change to a billboard sign would be the addition of language that specifies the allowance of an off-premise sign or sign structure. And again, a new definition is proposed to be added to address the inclusion of digital billboards. On this slide, this just kind of takes me through the bits and pieces of the proposal and how it would affect the current code. And this would essentially remove billboards from the prohibited signs as currently listed in the code, and then add billboards to the sign allowance table. And there are a few discussion items that staff wanted to share with council. One, as mentioned earlier, billboards are currently prohibited in the Broadmore Overlay District. They're not explicitly prohibited in the downtown Pasco Overlay District, so there's some, the direction from council would be appreciated and certainly welcome. And then, this is part of the nitty-gritty part of the code amendment, is that technically each billboard structure would have two signs. The proposal is to allow a maximum of 25 signs, but technically you would have two faces to each billboard. We are interpreting that the intent behind this proposal is to allow for flexibility, opportunities for off-site advertising, and other opportunities, et cetera. So staff just wanted to confirm that essentially what we're looking for is 50, allowance of 50 signs, you know, two for each side. Staff has worked and met with the representative from Meadow Outdoor Advertising via email and in person. And the representative was also here this evening as well. And so that's the update on the proposed billboard update for council. There is a ordinance attached to the staff report. It has not yet been through the legal review, so following this meeting, staff will take direction from council, update that ordinance as applicable, and then send it off for legal review before coming back here shortly for a decision for council. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Do you have any questions or comments of council? Mr.?
Pearls.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, I'll go with you first, then I'll go to Mr. Grim.
Appreciate. Thank you, mayor. Just a couple of questions or clarifications. I think you asked some questions. I would be in favor of seeing these types of signs still prohibited in the Broadmore area. I think we have a different vision for that area, and not, I would not like to see it prohibited in the downtown Pasco. Talking with a lot of the business owners, the ones that I do frequently, they want advertising. They want stuff like this. If they have the money to do it, they would create their own, but they don't have the money to do that. And I would also say that, I would say 50, I guess, in the sense of how the definition is. Be 50 billboards, one on each side, but to me, I would just count that as one digital board with two faces. That's the way I would look at that. And in regards to it coming back to us, you mentioned legal review after that. Is that going to go to us, or is it going to go to Planning Commission before it comes back to us?
No, the direction, I believe, from council was to bring this ordinance back straight to council, so it will not be reviewed by the planning commission.
Okay. So yeah, other than that, like I said, I think I answered some of your questions, other than... Yeah, no, I think I answered them both, so that's what I would be in favor of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peralis and Mr. Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually met with John this spring, who is the representative, and, you know, was talking even with Eric Ferguson, our city attorney, via email this week, just talking about what might end up on the, on the billboards. And I guess that's my really only concern for a path forward is that, you know, the city of Pasco doesn't get covered with, you know, casinos and cannabis, and, you know, even alcohol-related, and, you know. I still waiting to hear back from staff. Eric was digging in. I bugged him on a holiday weekend. So, you know, I know there will be some time before next week to see. There was a recent Supreme Court decision, the town of Gilbert, Arizona versus Reed, that spoke to that a little bit, but I guess I could see a path forward if perhaps we could eliminate like eight restricted items from the billboards. That would be, I think, the compromise I'd be looking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grim and Ms. Ross.
I do have some questions in regards to the amount. 50, it seems a little steep for the size of Pasco. Is this a standard number for a city this size?
We didn't look into what other jurisdictions, what their threshold was. This was the proposal from the applicant, and we can certainly go do that research if that's direction from council.
I'd be interested to see cities, other cities comparison, just for comparison. Other cities the size of Pasco, how many signs they have? Just because to me, 50 seems like a lot. I did see that the roof signs, I was reading through that, I was like, how do you put a sign on the roof? That would be a little out there, but that is, seems to be the only one still prohibited. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. My concern is over the amount. I would, I would like to limit it to the outskirts, to the outside of the city of Pasco, per the map that you showed. You know, it's advertising, inviting travelers to places within the city, or, you know, something up ahead, something of interest. I, yeah, that's, that's, that would be my take, limiting the amount and and placement on the perimeter, city limits. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Milney.
Thank you, mayor. I know we are obviously doing it to 25, so I mean, it is double-sided, but I mean, it is 25 signs. I mean, not every sign would be, I don't believe would be double-sided if it was like on the side of a building. So I'm saying it is a lesser number. But I was hoping that Mr. Ferguson could chime in and tell us, you know, as far as what Councilman Grim was talking about. Do you have any input on that?
Sure, yeah. So we were able to really kind of dig into it a little bit this afternoon. And I do want to preface this with, this is definitely, I mean, most of the time, this is the case, but this is especially the case in this particular area of law because it is very fluid. I'll give you an example. The Supreme Court just issued back in 2022 some clarification on the Gilbert case against with regard to some restrictions that the city of Austin had. And the opinion itself was only 13 pages, but there was, it was 40, the majority opinion and the case itself is 49 pages of people talking about how this isn't going to be very settled for very long because there's still a lot of gaps in coverage. And so I'll just try to give you a little bit of a thumbnail sketch of the overview. Essentially, what it comes down to is the Gilbert case really took on a much broader kind of restriction that was, that the town of Gilbert had in Arizona, which basically limited the, they had like 23 different types of restrictions or regulations based on each type of sign. And you had to know the content of each one of those signs to know what the regulations were for. The Supreme Court came back and said, you can't do that. You're regulating these, these signs through your sign code. You're regulating based on content. When you do that, you can regulate based on content, but it requires strict scrutiny, which is the highest level of analysis that really is tough to overcome. You have to have a compelling government interest in a narrowly tailored restriction. So it's really tough to get to that burden. So anyway, long and short of it, everybody thought, pretty much after 2015, that what Gilbert was saying was that all sign codes had to be content neutral. Well, that, folks kind of took that to an extreme and said that you can't, the, kind of the joke was, if you have to read the sign to know what kind of sign it is, that's content. That's basing it on the content of the sign. The Supreme Court came back with their Austin case in 2022 and clarified and said, no, that's an extreme reading of Gilbert. And really what it matters is if it's, if the regulation itself is focused purely on the content, or if you're having to read the sign to get, take, to get the form and function of the content so that you can understand what kind of sign it is. That's not the same thing as taking a position on whether you want those types of signs. So that's, that's really, it's a confusing analysis, but long and short of it is, we got a little more clarity with regard to what we can and can't regulate. Factor in as well that you have a commercial speech analysis that comes along with this, which is not part of the analysis from, from the town of Gilbert case, which doesn't, it clearly is based on content because it's commercial speech. You have to judge it by the content of the speech. So there's a little bit of an overlap with, now we're kind of at the point where we have two things going on. We have off-premises analysis for signs, and we also have commercial speech analysis. So, and I, one of the questions that we were coming up with, what would be a type of off-premises sign that wouldn't be commercial speech? Well, there turns out a lot of things. They can be political advertisements. They can be church signs that wouldn't have a commercial interest in it, but would say, attend here, or whatever. So there's lots of different messages that could be on these outdoor signs or could be on off-premises signs that wouldn't necessarily be commercial. So long and short of it is, I think the thing that we can say fairly certainly, fairly certain, is that strict scrutiny wouldn't apply. There is going to be some restrictions on what you can and can't limit. With regard to the question about certain commercial things that folks were not wanting to have in certain locales, that can't be banned outright. Commercial speech analysis requires that you have to go through what they call this Central Hudson Test, which is a four-part test, basically established that you have a need and you have to go through it. But it basically has to be, at the end of the day, it has to be a reasonable time, place, and manner restriction. You can't, you can't ban things outright. So for example, if you wanted to say you don't want advertisements for alcohol or marijuana stores, or casinos, or whatever, within 1,000 feet of schools, you're probably going to be fine. But you can't say citywide, no, no alcohol signs, no cannabis stores, those types of things. That's going to be an outright ban, and you can't do that. So it's a, it's a fluid situation, but at the end of the day, you do have some room now that we didn't think we had a few years ago. It's complicated. And again, I think that'll be part of, as we get through this and figuring out exactly what the marching orders are, and then going out and kind of pressure testing that with the law, the way it currently reads, and making sure that we can get from where you are and where we wanted to end up being. So sorry to give you a dissertation there, but.
No, it's good. So thank you for that. I did say that, like you say, for instance, if John was to approach me and say, hey, we want to sign on your building, obviously I would want to know the content. I wouldn't want them advertising Home Depot on my store when I'm selling tools myself. I mean, that doesn't make sense to me, or marijuana, when I've been against that. So I do believe that, you know, if that was the case, or I mean, a lot of businesses, I think, would say, hey, we want to know what you're advertising, and if this goes along with us morally, or if it makes good business. And so I do think there's going to be some regulation when it's in commercial areas with the businesses. And I do also agree with Councilman Peralis that I agree with what, everything he was saying as far as that it shouldn't be in the Broadmore. I do understand that aspect, but we should, if at all possible, concentrate on the downtown, because I do know people in the downtown are always struggling, and then sometimes, you know, if you have your own commercials or whatever, run in the loop, and, you know, people could actually come in the store because they see that it has something. Maybe you don't go to all those stores, but you see it, a big billboard of boots, and you think, oh, I didn't know they sold that. So anyway, I just wanted to let you know that if staff needed direction, I am in line with Councilman Peralis. So that's my take.
Thank you, Mr. Milney. Councilmember Blaisdale.
Eric, can you go into a little bit more detail about political affiliation, religious group affiliation, and what the laws align with that?
Yeah, so typically, political speech, religious speech, those types of things usually enjoy the highest level of scrutiny, so that any kind of regulations the government would want to make for those, you do have to pass strict scrutiny. Now, the thing that the Supreme Court came out in the Austin case that really kind of clarified was that there's a difference between, based on the quote locality of the sign. So you do have a little more wiggle room in terms of what you can regulate with off-premises signs. In other words, if the sign is advertising something, not necessarily selling something. I know that's, those are, I kind of equate those in my own mind. But it's not clear exactly yet what exactly that means in terms of, okay, so some, you know, folks, oftentimes you'll see with billboards, people will, you know, vote yes on whatever, right? Some political action committee will pay for that. I don't have the answer. Yeah, that was really the kind of where we were able to get to at this point in understanding what that Austin case really means in terms of, if you just wanted to ban those signs from localities based on location, you know, with, I mean, you currently have that ban right now. You don't allow billboards unless they currently exist. So, so yeah, so there's some, there's some gray area there that we still need to kind of nail down, but it is confusing. So, yeah, but we'll, we'll be able to, we'll get through it eventually.
Thank you. I think with this, circle back to Mr. Grim and Ms. Peralis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I just want to say also, this, John's information was presented before the Pasco Chamber of Commerce, and they also were for this. And, you know, even looking at the map, you look at all those little blue quotes or whatever they are, you know, along Highway 12. And I wouldn't have thought there was that many, you know, up Highway 12 till I saw all that and realized, man, you know, they, they do blend in pretty good there, and, you know, which, of course, isn't necessarily what you want for billboards. You want them to stand out and everything, but yeah, at the same time, yeah, I would probably approach this with trepidation at this point, Mr. Mayor. I may be the outlier on that, but that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ross.
Thank you. Mr. Ferguson, and probably Jacob here. Jacob first. You mentioned something about the murals not included in this ordinance. Mr. Ferguson, could you please clarify to me how a wall sign is different from a mural?
Yes, Mr. Gonzalez may be able to help out a little more in this area than I am, but essentially what it comes down to is, it's going to come down to the materials, the location, and it's not going to be, that kind of analysis is going to be solely focused on where the sign is and the materials, and the, I guess, the attributes related to the placement of the sign, as opposed to the content or where the sign may be. So it sounds like we opened the door for murals in a much larger context in terms of removing the one quarter of a wall requirement that we used to have, or restriction that we used to have. So I think we have a little more room there, but this would be separate apart based on the definition section of our, of our code that's potentially being offered to be amended. It wouldn't include murals. This would be specifically off-site, standalone.
If I could read it, it says, wall sign means any sign or graphic design which is attached peril to or flat against, or is painted on the wall or exterior of a building or structure. And I guess this comes down to the content of?
Yeah, so when the murals and public art were both added and taken out of the sign code and into their own chapter in the municipal code, we defined wall mural or artwork. And the definition of that is a mural or artwork painted on a building that does not have a commercial message, name, or other advertisement incorporated. And so, and right below that, all murals are not considered signs. So therefore, they're not subject to the standards of the sign code. And so that's kind of where the key difference is between public art or mural versus an advertisement sign is that wall mural or artwork does not have a commercial message or an advertising component to it.
Thank you for the clarification.
I guess I'll just wrap things up. Looks like no additional lights are on, aside from yours, Mr. Ferguson. I don't know if you're, I was ready to let you jump in, save the sinking ship. I think the bottom line is, from my perspective, you asked for two points, and I guess the third one, whether or not we support, was kind of the implicit question. You know, I think for now, leaving Broadmore as the cross-hatched and not permitting of signs and billboards makes sense until we really see how that develops. You know, because we could allow them temporarily till things are constructed and then just say, rip it down, but that seems to make even less sense. So I think for now, leaving it as is. I do think allowing, from what Mr. Peralis is indicating, in downtown would be wise too, just allowing those businesses to do a little bit more free-range advertising, if you will, through billboards or various signs on top of shops, or whatever the case may be. I do think that counting both sides as a single sign, to me, makes the most sense. And then I guess the fundamental question is whether or not I am aligned with this. I do have some concerns, Mr. Grim, with the approach of, I think Mr. Ferguson's already led us down this path, trying to regulate types and that sort of thing. That's, that would be, to me, very... would be to me very concerning. Uh, certainly in my opinion, open us up to more risk than reward. Um, and so I think fundamentally I'm, I'm open to, um, expanding our, our signage. If I counted right, I think we had 21 is what I'm seeing there. Um, allowing for a total of 50 seems to be reasonable. And, you know, that said, I may give it some more thought and, and really drive around a little bit more and feel like we're knocking it out of the park with what we've got. So as a sense, I, I'm, I support this, but I, you know, you'll bring it back and I'll give it an additional thought. I don't have any, I guess, primary concerns with what's written in the ordinance. Do we have any other comments or questions of council, from council? Uh, Mr. Graham?
Thank you. Since you're asking, I mean, don't get me wrong. I love the idea of seeing the billboards along the interstate, trying to draw people off of the highway into town for, for the sake of commerce and everything. But, um, I guess, yeah, my struggle would be just in and around town itself. So anyways, thank you.
Thank you. With that, we're going to move on to, uh, public comment. We have, yeah, I, I, I got you. I got you. Again, the rules is, are pretty clear. Two minutes per side. So, uh, I don't know who's pro or con or maybe an ambivalent at this point. So Mr. Grandbois, you had your hands up, or I guess John, you were the proponent here. So why don't you bring it up first and then Mr. Grandbois?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yep, that's what you got.
Yeah, start with my first word?
Yeah, it's going to start right when you turn that light on.
There we go.
Okay. Uh, city councilors, thank you for having me here tonight. I'm just going to jump right into it. The two faces per structure, that's the way most codes are is, is a billboard has a front and a back face, just like a freestanding pole sign. They have a front and a back face. They can advertise both ways. It hides the superstructure behind the faces on both a freestanding or a billboard. So that's the way to go. Um, the 15, uh, billboards was based on 10 being out there. Uh, talking with Jennifer, it sounds like there's more like within the urban growth boundary, it's 13. Uh, so that's, that lowers the amount, but I'm looking at billboards through, across the city of Pasco. And based on that new number, I, I would prefer 28 as opposed to 25. And I strictly 25 or 28 is, is what the county is. The 50 is separate faces and, and every code that I've worked with, two faces per one billboard structure. They advertise both ways. Um, the downtown overlay district, um, I agree that, that I believe they need to be there. There's needed advertising for the core district businesses. And this is a great way, especially digitals that can advertise, um, the core businesses downtown, uh, special events they might have, uh, special products, uh, sales, whatnot. It's also a chance for the city to advertise on, on these types of, uh, digital billboards. And I've talked to some people about donating 400 per day on each of our digitals to the city, which would be for the mayor and the council to decide what to use for. And that's all I have.
All right. Perfect. You, you stuck the landing at two minutes.
And if you have any questions, I can talk later.
We'll be around. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr., Mr. Grandbois.
Thank you, council and staff. Uh, Thomas Grandbois, Big Maple Properties, 108 North Fourth Avenue in Pasco. Um, I've had an opportunity to speak with a number of my neighbors about this and they are aggressively against the idea of having billboards downtown. Uh, we have low-lying buildings as is and the idea of stacking up large billboards on top, uh, is visually distracting. Um, that's, that's what I've heard from my neighbors. And, uh, while I'd love the idea of being able to monetize my roof space, I've got a big old roof. I, I love it. I think that that'd be great. I also recognize that the aesthetic would not be good unless we had very, very standardized, at least signage. And that sort of goes against the way that things are downtown. Um, and when we talk about advertising our own products and businesses being able to advertise their own products or their own stores, that's separate from a billboard, I believe. A billboard is, correct me if I'm wrong, but a billboard is typically about a third party, not your own advertising your own taco place. This is more about being able to set up, uh, a billboard right across the street from Hocho's Tacos and say, hey, don't go there. Come two blocks up the street to my taco truck. So I think that it, you really have to take this into account or let's put a Home Depot, let's put a Home Depot billboard, not on top of your building, but directly across the street from it. Could you imagine? Or a Lowe's or something like that. So i- it's one thing if we have large tall buildings, but we just don't have that and it'd be visually overwhelming. Uh, we, I think that we'd better spend time on things like that or things like, uh, improving the sign code that allows for more advertising of our own businesses than bringing in third-party overwhelming signage. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Grandbois, if we do move forward with this, is there any chance you might be able to bring some signatures or some, something from your neighbors? Thank you. All right. So we're at one and one. We got two minutes per side. Commissioner Baumann?
Thank you, council, Stephen Baumann. Um, don't, I'm not necessarily for or against. Um, I do love freedom, but as you, as you craft this, I would just encourage you to be really careful about how do you go about, um, as, as Thomas was sharing, how do you go about, are you guys going to have a division that approves and disapproves, um, what is advertised on a private businesses, um, sign? So if, if you're going to do that, I would encourage you to lay that out very, very carefully because that could be, that could be a very slippery slope. And I know that, um, I've talked to a number of, of people that have commercial signs and some of those are month by month. And so are you going to have something where that somebody has to come get a new approval every month for their sign? So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baumann. Do we have any additional public comment here? Going once? Going twice? No, we're, we're, we're not going to have people circle back. Sorry about that. Yeah. No, it's, it's the two minutes, one shot. It's unfortunate, but, um, I, I do appreciate it. Well, like I said, we'll be around, you know, certainly talk after. Um, with that, seeing no additional public comment, we will move on to item B. And that is, let me pull out of the, uh, resolution supplemental agreement with HLA for project management professional services on Lewis Street overpass project. And this is coming from Public Works Director Sarah.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. We are presenting to you a third supplemental to the contract with HLA Engineering. Uh, you may identify that HLA Engineer has been providing project management services for this project, acting as extension of staff. And specifically HLA has provided a project engineer, Michael Oldman, who has been in front of, uh, this body, uh, explaining change orders and schedules and also participating in meetings with property owners. Um, his work is essential to being able to finishing the project and the proposal is to have this third amendment, which will carry us all the way through project closeout and, um, potential auditing if it was necessary. This amendment is for $305,000 and that amount is not to exceed, meaning that only the hours work would be paid for. Um, and with that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Do we have any? Mr. Paralus?
Okay, um, when is this project going to be done? And you see, you have December 31st, 2026. So when are we going to be substantially done with everything?
Substantial completion is expected for fall of 2024, yet the agreements following Washdott's directives typically have a two-year lag in their end date to prevent agreements from expiring on agencies.
So we essentially are doubling this agreement, right? So I, I guess essentially, can you expand more on the exhibit B in regards to what they would be doing for the next two years that could potentially pay them another $300,000? Cause it's kind of just generic, like, um, they'll work approximately 20 hours a week on project management. I mean, I don't know. I, I, I think for me, I would like to know exactly what they're doing. Maybe give examples of deliverables that, I mean, then that would necessitate us paying them those rates. I mean, but that's, I guess that's something that you guys oversee. But I mean, to double it to go over two years, I mean, that just seems like a lot.
I, I can provide some context for it. So, uh, a lot of the work that is being provided is in lieu of having a, an engineer within the engineering team in Public Works be doing the day-to-day oversight of the other consultants and contractor working on this project. Um, the work that HLA provides is really reviewing those proposed changes, proposed pay-ups, um, reviewing schedules, supporting any needs, say that, uh, as the director I have or, or, um, the public has regarding the project. So it's truly representing the city in this project and preparing the information necessary, for example, for, um, change orders that need to come for your approval, providing those agenda reports, exhibits, uh, discussing changes to traffic control as it has occurred in the past. It's overall overseeing, uh, the work of others and helping us get through the full documentation of the project to ensure that we can have a clean audit at the end of the project as well, which is, which really explains why the, um, there is a additional time and money spent towards the end of the project, which seems to be when we do full review, ensuring everything is filled out, follow up with anything that is missing. Um, uh, what other things? Uh, some of the funding pursuits that were done in the recent past, receive additional funding came from the direct work of HLA, um, and overall just support.
So this is nothing that we can't do in-house? We, we don't have any staff that could provide this, you know, the 20 hours a week and all that?
We have capable staff, but everybody is, uh, fully loaded at this time. So we need that external help and, um, understanding that specifically Michael Oldman, who is the assigned staff from HLA, has been involved with the project. We would have some lost, uh, historical knowledge in the process.
Oh yeah, that, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments, uh, from council? I think I'll just echo the sentiment. I mean, I, I appreciate that we're going outside for this rather than hiring someone to fire them in a year and a half or two years. I think that's wise. Um, obviously if we don't have the band, but do it in-house, I understand why we're going outside, but, uh, I, I agree with Mr. Paralus. This is, you know, it was great when this was finally done, like moving forward, then it was done and it's still not done. So it's, uh, you know, it's, it's a concern when we have cross, uh, cost overruns and, you know, consistent. You mentioned grants. Um, do you foresee these HLA folks being able to potentially secure some additional funding to kind of recoup what we're spending on them?
So the last effort that we had was additional funding from TIV and there was direct work from HLA pursuing that. That was for $2 million. And currently we are exploring another opportunity through DOT where all the work is happening from HLA.
Okay. Thank you. Just please keep us posted. I know you will, but you know, obviously if we, if we or they procure that, um, be nice to hear that they're paying for themselves in great part. Um, seeing no further lights, do we have any public comment on this issue? Going once? Going twice? Sold. No one to talk about this project after years and years. Uh, with that, we'll move on to item number six, Ms. Laney's council discussion. Mr. Lincoln.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and council. Uh, first just want to remind you that next week on the 15th, there is no council meeting, uh, per the vote that was taken last week. And then, uh, Mr. Gonzalez has an update on, uh, speaking of downtown, on how the funding is going.
Uh, yes. Good evening, uh, mayors and members of council. Just wanted to provide council with a quick update, given the expanded boundaries, uh, for the small business relief program. Um, so as of, uh, July 1, 2024, uh, the city's received a total of 21 application, 12 of those, 21 applications, 12 of those applications have been approved for a total dispersment of, uh, just over $122,000. There are seven pending applications. Staff is working with those applicants to, uh, complete their, uh, submittal. And then, uh, two applications have been denied, uh, due to their, uh, location outside of the expanded boundary. So, um, a few more businesses were able to receive assistance and wanted to share that information with you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you for that update. Um, looks like nothing further from staff. Do we have any Ms. Laney's comments from council? Um, Mr. Graham and then Mr. Parlaus.
Thank you. Just real briefly, Mr. Mayor, I received a email that I passed on to staff today from a concerned neighbor, just with the road construction going on in Sylvester, just that with the boat races coming, that we will adequately, um, communicate to those coming into the area and, you know, try to provide some comfort to the, to my neighbors down there that, um, you know, that we're going to have the proper signs in place. And obviously the construction's still going to be in place, but whatever we can do to mitigate that would be appreciated because we're just a couple of weeks away now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham, Mr. Parlaus.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. Um, I just want to also express the, that sentiment of, um, you know, thanks to law enforcement and the fire department, um, for falling up on, you know, issues with fireworks. But I just want to bring to this council, I think we need to do a little bit better enforcement or really just education to our neighbors. I got, I feel the many phone calls on Friday and Saturday, um, you know, being in my neighborhood, people lighting fireworks till two o'clock in the morning. Um, I think we need to just have a better education about letting people know the dates they can do fireworks and when they need to stop. I know it's very hard to do that, like the customer Milney, um, alluded to, but I think we just got to be better about it. Cause I mean, all over social media, phone calls, like we need to just ban fireworks again. We don't need fireworks anymore. And, and you know, really when I, when I went home on, you know, Thursday night, I mean, it was, looked like there was a fire somewhere and it was that much smoke everywhere across all of Pasco. So I just want to bring that, um, to the board. And I think that's something we should probably look into next year in regards to the education. And I did notice, um, posts on the city, uh, on the city Facebook page about, you know, the, the timeframes and stuff like that, when, and when they need to stop. But I think we could probably do a little better, perhaps even put di- digital reader board signs in certain places across the city, letting them know, you know, we need to stop lighting fireworks and stuff like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, seeing no further comment, I'll echo that sentiment to a degree. Um, I do think that as we continue, you know, I know we allow for fireworks during, um, New Year's Eve as well. So I think the reminders that they're safe and sane fireworks. In other words, the non-aerial fireworks are allowable, uh, as well as the days and times that they are allowable. Um, I, I don't think regardless of whether we were to re-ban them or whatever the case is, clearly those fireworks that, uh, were mostly complained of were not purchased, uh, at least not legally within city limits. Whether they're purchased legally elsewhere is up to debate. Um, and so I, I do think, you know, I personally, I would, I would struggle to prohibit fireworks again in the city of Pasco because I don't think it would achieve anything. I think there's an opportunity, you know, to further discuss it, further provide education. Um, and I don't think you were indicating that you were proposing a ban, uh, so, so I mean, yeah, no, I, I, I just want to be clear there. That's not where I took your comment. Um, uh, but I do think that continually working with the educational information and putting it out on social media, et cetera, would be helpful, especially as we approach, I mean, it's not for a while, but as we approach the end of the year, um, and we have the second allowable window, I think we'll want to do that. Um, I see no further lights on. So with that, we're going to move on to item number seven. We do have one item, uh, discussion with legal, this is executive session. Discussion with legal counsel about current or potential litigation under RCW Vice Code of Washington, 42.30.110 subsection 1, Roman numeral 1 or I. Uh, it looks like it's going to last 10 minutes. Presumably, uh, city manager and, uh, city attorney and public works director. Are we set on 10 minutes or we think we need more? Okay. Well, it is, uh, 7:49. We'll go for 10 minutes presumably and we'll be back out at 7:59. Thank you. Okay, well, it is uh seven forty-nine. We'll go for ten minutes presumably, and we'll be back out at seven fifty-nine. Thank you. Okay, well, it is uh seven forty-nine. We'll go for ten minutes presumably, and we'll be back out at seven fifty-nine. Thank you. Okay, well, it is uh seven forty-nine. We'll go for ten minutes presumably, and we'll be back out at seven fifty-nine. Thank you. It's eight oh nine. We're gonna extend for three more minutes to eight twelve. It is eight twelve and we are back from executive session. With no further action, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for joining us.